Morning, everyone. I'm gonna go ahead and call the study session for April 11th to order and ask the clerk for a roll call, please.
Thank you. Director Brett Echols.
Here.
Vice Secretary Robert Ooten.
Here.
Secretary Arthur Perry. Vice President Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Assistant Michael Schaefer.
Here. Thank you. Public comments. This is the time set aside for anyone in the public to speak on items within our jurisdiction, not on the agenda. Do either of the public wish to speak? Seeing neither of them jumping up, we'll move to items of study. And the most important item this morning. Caitlin, are you doing this one or Scott? All yours.
Good morning, Mr. President and members of the board. I would like to introduce to you the District Associate Accountant Sean Fan. He graduated from Cal State Fullerton with a bachelor's degree in business administration. With an emphasis.
What is that?
Like I said, Mark, it's a good job for now.
Sean came from Radiant Futures, formerly known as W T L C. It is a nonprofit organization that specializes in providing services to domestic violence and human trafficking survivors. They were the first domestic violence agency in Orange County with a mission to build safer communities from violence and harm. He's eager to help the community and is proud to be a part of C M S D. Welcome.
Sean, welcome aboard. As soon as she said you were a Titan, Art and I are.
Yes, but I was there when there was only three buildings.
And I was there when there were four buildings, so, you know.
And they still didn't have any parking.
No, they had lots of parking.
Lots of parking. Welcome aboard. Some really good work. Congratulations for that. Welcome to, welcome to our team. We're glad to have you. Terrific. Okay, thanks Caitlin. All right, let's move to the code enforcement. Just report, David.
Good morning, President Schaefer, members of the board. This is my report for the month of March. The report summarizes major points for three ordinance enforcement topics covering scavenging, graffiti, and trash container enforcement. For the month of March, C M S D interim code enforcement officer focused his efforts on patrols in various parts of the community. The goal is to identify and deter instances of scavenging and residential trash carts left within public view. In the month of March, the district saw a number of complaints filed with the C M S D interim code enforcement staff regarding scavenging activity in the city. With most scavenging complaints, the alleged violations take place in the early morning hours. In order to address this, the interim code enforcement officer is patrolling the streets usually by 6:30 a.m. Included below are instances of scavenging that were detected while the officer wasn't investigating specific complaints. In the month of March, I caught two scavengers. One on Royal Palm in the alley behind and one on Albert Place. Any questions for that so far? Trash container enforcement in the month of March, there were a few customer complaints reported at the district headquarters regarding trash carts in public view. The following is a list of locations where trash cart violations were found and addressed by the courtesy notice process. A hundred and forty-one violation notices written last month at the various locations listed below. Any questions about that so far?
Just that the numbers are getting higher. The weather changing.
Yeah. And then there were no cases of graffiti this month of March. That'll conclude my report.
Even, um. And Scott, you may have to chime in on this. When in that alleyway in Royal Palm, I'm pretty familiar with it, obviously. Those landlords, those building owners have the option of having bins or containers.
Correct.
Some of them have bins. The residents come out and they have their own bins in the enclosures. Some of them have container, you know, the big four yard, whatever. Do we? Do you enforce the containers or just are?
My jurisdiction is just the trash carts. This is the city's enforcement on the dumpsters.
Okay, so that, I mean, if you see some in those, we have no jurisdiction.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not speaking to them. I mean, uh.
Okay.
I just let them know that scavenging, I don't get specific about is dumpsters or carts. I just use the word scavenging and so I think they kind of get the idea.
I would assume and I appreciate that. The other thing is we move into thirteen eighty-three. And I think you've already said that either you or Scott, you might have brought this up about violations with thirteen eighty-three and mixed, you know. We're going to see that on the monthly report if we have it, right? C R and R are going to provide that to you as well. Okay. I noticed the other day. Sorry about my cardboard fetish, but I'm going to say it again. One of my neighbors had a huge cardboard box sitting on top of their mixed waste, huge. And on Friday after the trash was picked up, the cardboard box was sitting on the ground next to, and of course, the resident just left it. They put their barrels away. So it's just kind of symptomatic of some of the things we're going to see, I think, but.
Yeah, I think I saw that when I was over in your area on Friday. Yeah, I don't know why, and maybe they just don't want to, you know, break it up. Hope, they're thinking maybe hopefully the driver, you know, grabs that, but.
You know, I, I don't, I kind of applaud the driver for leaving it there. You know, it's kind of like rubbing their nose in a little bit, you know.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, I see a lot that they've either blocked the carts with the cardboard or, you know, it's either sticking three quarters of the way out and and if it falls out, I don't think he's going to get out and pick that up unless it's in his way.
Yeah, I wouldn't.
You indicated that there were a hundred and forty-one violations in March.
Correct.
And was that spread out or was it?
It was. There's, there's, you know, some college park addresses in there as well. One right on the corner of Princeton and Harbor. Storing their carts up against the walls, you know, towards the end of their driveway. But the notices curbed the problem. I mean, I went through there yesterday and the problem's been solved, so.
Okay. Thank you.
They're throughout the entire city.
Anything else for Bob?
Uh, David, I think the city has the same policy about carts not being in view of the public. Is the city, does the city give the sanitary district any assistance? I mean, I don't think they have a tagging procedure or an enforcing procedure or even anyone going around looking at this process. Is there any solution? I mean, this number, you know, it doesn't change much from month to month, so we've got twenty-three thousand residences. And this is a minimal number of carts left in view week, month by month. I mean, it's less, it's less than one percent. You know, I don't see any solution to it. I that's just going to go on forever.
Well, unfortunately, some people, you know, take the notices and, you know, are educated by that and will comply. Other ones are still continuing to use carts to block parking.
Oh, yeah, a lot, lots of things. Okay.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of different variables, but, uh, in the, in the case, I just got a case on Swathmore and it was kind of a city and sanitary issue, so I forward those emails to the city, Renee. And then in turn, they do the same if it's a trash cart issue for me as well.
What was that issue on Swathmore?
Uh, trash carts left in public view, but there were a lot of other city violations that were included that, uh, they had just like debris and things that were.
Is that at the end of Swathmore on the right?
It was on the right-hand side. It's a cul-de-sac, obviously. You know the area, so.
And we could, it's funny how we see the same things probably that you see, but from a different perspective.
I have one other question if I could. Okay, so do you go into areas such as, as you're going into Mason Ridge Country Club, there's that apartment complex, not apartment, but they're attached homes. Do you ever go in that and see if they have any problems?
So some of those are gated communities and I don't have a gate code for.
It's not, it's not gated. Just pull in and they, they use our trash carts. And there's probably like a hundred units. I'm just curious because that's where my sister lives.
Yeah.
I was just wondering, do you go in those?
If I drive by and I see something then that's accessible to me, yeah, not a problem. I'm addressing those.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate you.
Okay, do we have anything else? Go over the.
Big thing, yeah.
Oh, I thought we were done.
Yeah, quick meeting.
We have to be out here by eight thirty.
Scott?
Thank you, Mr. President. It is our pleasure to present to the board our preliminary annual budget twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-two, twenty-five fiscal years. Before I turn this over to Caitlin, she's going to be giving us the presentation of the budget. I do want to give a big thank you to my leadership team for putting together the budget. We worked really hard to present to you a balanced budget, which is before you is a balanced budget for both fiscal years. Also, a little bit different this year, I'm going to have each department head go over their budget with you, so if you want to ask them questions about their budget, this is the time to do it. We're not asking the board to approve the budget today. This is really just to seek your comment feedback. We'll come back, I think, in the next study session for another review. Ultimately, the, have the board recommend approving the budget at your June board meeting. So there'd be ample times for the board and the public to see our preliminary budget and make comments as appropriate. So, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Caitlin Tran, our finance manager, and she's going to kick it off with our preliminary budget.
Yeah, just before you move on, sorry to interrupt, but I just want to be clear. So today we'll comment, review. The next study session in May, we'll do a similar process and then assuming everyone's in relative agreement, June board meeting would.
Yes, and if we need to have another meeting prior to the, we can always have a special meeting and we can always do that too, so we have.
Got it. I, sometimes it takes me a meeting just to catch something. Thank you.
Question. Caitlin, it's all yours.
Mr. President and members of the board. As Scott said, we have a balanced budget for both fiscal years. So we have all departments here today to go over their department budgets in detail. So first I will go over the budget summaries. So here in front of you on these, this one slide is just a summary of the two fiscal, the two fiscal years of balanced budget. Revenue expenses and the net revenue all balanced. So now I'll dive into the revenue. I'll talk about the revenue first. Fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, total revenue is fifteen million, three hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred. The general fund revenue budget of three hundred and forty-eight thousand. This is where the property, this is where property taxes are being recorded and then transferred to solid waste fund to help stabilize rates. Staff projects two percent increase each fiscal year. The transfer out to solid waste fund is at the end of page two on of attachment A. In the staff report, the annual charge for solid waste and wastewater funds are charges for services that the district provides that are placed on the annual assessment. Solid waste, annual charge revenue budget is approximately six point five million. It is, it includes a six percent rate increase. This is the last year of the five-year rate increase. It also include a zero point one percent increase in new account. Wastewater annual charge revenue is approximately seven point six million. It includes rate increase from the two thousand twenty-two wastewater rate study. Also includes a zero point two percent rate increase in new accounts as well. And then also there are other revenue budgets such as additional container charges, investment earnings, contributions from C R and R, charges for services, sewer permits, inspection fees, and non-other operating revenues. So that's revenue. Any questions so far? Not.
Are those actual figures or estimated?
Estimate from, for, for revenue. So I can't guarantee you that that's exactly going to come in, but that's my best estimate revenue.
Thanks, Art. That was a question I had is we're estimating it based on the current status, current residence count and all of that. There's no way of knowing what we're going to get in terms of new, new construction or A D U construct, all of that. So do we factor any of that? Do you have any kind of, or do we have to wait till the city gives us numbers?
Great question. So for example, the wastewater rate study, actually, my, my number there is about two hundred thousand dollars less than the rate study that we just did because they over projected or the, the A D U's number and the accounts number were a little bit higher than actually came in since we did the, or lower than the rate study did.
And that name, number came from the city, I would say.
Um, yes.
I mean, there's no way for us to, to know except for permits and things like that, so okay.
Yeah, and also sewer permits, inspection fees, the five percent revenue from O C S D, those were a lot lower than prior COVID. So these budget numbers are, are lower than, I would say, two thousand eighteen, seventeen.
Still some effects from COVID too. I mean, they're, they're, I'm sure some of that, so. Brett, quick.
Just a quick question on your two percent taxing. Is that just a historical number that's just trended at two percent basically? Thank you.
Yes, great.
So then moving on, we have expenses, starting out with fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, salaries and benefits. We have two sections, salaries and benefits. One is administrative on the top there and then in the middle, we have salaries and the benefits for wastewater. So administrative, those are salaries and benefits for H Q staff and wastewater maintenance are for district yard staff. So total salaries and benefits for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four is approximately three point seven million. And it includes salaries and benefits. A six percent cost of living adjustment. The February to February Consumer Price Index for Orange County, L.A., Riverside Counties is five point one percent. Last fiscal year, the C P I was seven point four percent. However, staff received a five percent COLA last year to reduce the impact of not receiving a full COLA last year. Staff are requesting a six percent COLA for twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. A five percent, a five point one percent COLA, if approved by the board, it will result in an increase of salary of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine hundred. If a six percent COLA, a six percent COLA would add an additional twenty thousand eight hundred, totaling one hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred. And then also included in the salaries and benefits, a five percent merit increase. It does not, the five percent merit increase, increase that we apply, it does not apply to all staff. It doesn't apply to employees who are, reach the max salary range. And I believe there are five employees that does not, are at their max salary range that are not eligible. There's an increase in cafeteria plan that the administrative manager is here today and she can go more into detail of the cafeteria plan later during her presentation. A reclassification of the part-time code enforcement officer to full-time position. This is a hundred percent charged to the solid waste fund. A new full-time administrative assistant for the engineering department. This is a hundred percent charged to the wastewater fund. And a new part-time accounting clerk for the finance department, and this is split between solid waste fund and solid waste fund and wastewater fund. Why are we requesting a part-time accounting clerk position? Well, over the last few years, the in-person audits have become remote audits. As a result, it requires all documents to be scanned and uploaded to the audit portals. And so it requires a lot of time, very time-consuming. Payroll, all invoices, cash receipt, journal entry, bank reconciliation, all financial records, we have to scan, organize, label and file away. Increase in payroll processing time due to policy changes and additional staffing over the years. Increase in back billing, required time to research, gather billing information, follow up on invoices and payment plans. Increase in request for purchase orders. Finance, finance staff are now generate, generating purchase orders for all capital improvement projects, agreements and change orders. We're also overseeing assessment now. Finance staff submitted the last budget cycle to G F O A for an award. And so now we are triple crown winner and we want to continue that. And also stat, right now staff is currently tracking all fixed assets on a spreadsheet, and that's our spreadsheet. And the goal, the few, my goal is to track that in a software. And it's, it's going to take some time to find the right software and to implement that. So I do need help with that. This is a part-time position, so it's not, this position is not eligible for benefit. Is, if this position is approved, the recruitment will begin in January of next year. So the half-year salary cost for this position is fifteen thousand. And the four-year cost for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five is thirty-two thousand. And then the new full-time administrative assistant position to help the engineer, engineering department. The district engineer is here today and he can go into more detail of why his department need that position when he present his department. So, so, so far, any questions for?
I have a question. Is, is the scanning due to COVID or is that, is that just how the auditors do their work now?
Due to COVID and then now they just kind of, it's their new way of auditing now.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Can you, I'm just reading and then what you're saying on the cost of living adjustment that we approved not too long ago at five percent, correct? And that was for this current fiscal that we're in. What did we budget initially two years ago, year and a half ago, whatever it was for that?
So normally, I don't, we have, we budget a two-year budget.
Right.
So the first year budget, like right now for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, I know what the COLA is. So then I budget for that, that first year budget based on the February to February COLA. So the second year, normally we estimate a three percent, but the last two years been five or last year, seven point four percent. So we've been sticking to five percent. But like I said, twenty-three, twenty-four, we're asking for six percent because last year was a seven point four percent and we received a five percent. So normally it's about three percent to five percent that we budget for.
Okay, so the one we recently approved at five, you're saying we budgeted odds are three percent previously and we essentially bumped it a two percent based on the budget? Is that a fair assessment? Okay, and then, so I see that a six percent is being requested, but then you'd made note of using five or five point one, so I was, I was just confused.
I added the five point one to show that that's the number that it came in the February to February because that's per our policy. It's the February to February in the area, the Orange County, L.A. Riverside area.
Five point one is the actual C P I. The actual. And so in this preliminary budget, we're, we're looking at a six percent for year one, we'll call it, and then another six for year two, five in year two. Okay, all right, thank you.
I had a question. You bring up the slide before this. Yeah. I was looking this over. The one thing that maybe I'm still confused about both in our, in the expenses and then both funds. Explain to me retirement employer and retirement employee, but that expense, is that our CalPERS contribution? For, based on the employee? Explain to me the difference between employer and employee.
So the.
Yeah, right there.
Okay, so retirement employer, that portion is the employer paying for the employer for, for all staff. Well, I'm talking about H Q, this up, this portion here.
Yeah, that's fine.
The employee E are, it's so, it's only fourteen thousand total. Are for one employee at H Q here and.
So we have one employee where we're paying a hundred percent of their CalPERS.
Yes, the seven percent wastewater is down here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Employees that, that, that the district pays full employees where everyone else pays their, their share.
And they were.
And that's out of the Bell scandal. Remember the Bell scandal with all?
Yeah, yeah, I remember it.
So any new employees we have, you know, that, the district pays, there's dues costs, there's the employer contribution, pay contribution. So the district always picks up the hundred percent on employers and then the employee pays their, their part.
Right.
But we do have three employees where the district is paying a hundred percent because that was, that was the deal that the district made with employees prior to the Bell scandal.
And, and, and that's all grandfathered in and will be for their entire length of their.
Right, so if they, when they retire or they go somewhere else, then whoever replaces them, then they got to pick up their.
Yeah, okay.
If, I'm sorry, if I want to add to that. So Scott is correct. There are three employees. But Scott is paying his own portion. So then this up here is actually for one employee, and down here is for the other employee.
Okay.
Really only two employees.
I was just trying to figure out what the difference, why it was delineated twice. So speaking of retirement, in looking around the room and knowing the staff like I do, all the graybeards are up here, and we don't get retirement anyway. Except for one, except for one. And that would, and that would be our lead. So do we have any expenses, are we paying anything out to former employees that are retired? We have any expense for any of those folks that have retired? Joan, Joan Reeveck, who I think is deceased anyway, right? Is she still on? Thought I heard. So she's like Mark, Mark Twain, the rumors of her death. Anyway, do we have any expenses for any of those folks? We don't pay any of their medical or medic, we don't pay any.
No, we don't.
Okay. So based on the current staff, I mean, you probably have some idea of who's gonna be retiring. I mean, if anybody. Do we foresee any expense for those folks moving forward that we might have? So it's gonna be the same case for no matter who retires? Okay, I, I know some employers pay extended benefits.
We don't have lifetime medical, we don't have
Thank you, Scott, that's what I was looking.
Once, once the employees retired, all the, the district has to continue paying is, is the PERS.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, I just, I would just curious and Go ahead.
Just one as we're talking retirement. So with the addition of the full-time position and various things, do we, and I apologize if I missed it, but is there something in there that's showing us the long-term liability that we have and the difference for the PERS and things of that nature for those sorts of ads and things like that in the budget?
For the new administrative assistant, the full-time position, their purse, their benefits, it's all included in here.
Well, I guess what my question is, I don't know how better to say it. Our current PERS is X. What will this do to that X going forward is what I'm looking for.
We can bring that back to you in the next
I, I would appreciate that, just, just to see what this does to us long-term as we all get a year or two older.
Maybe I can answer that question now. As of right, well, the last financial statement in January that the auditor presented, we're actually overfunded right now because of the investment earnings.
Right.
But we're always a year or two behind, so it's hard to say. And depending on who we hire, you know, we hire someone that's almost to retirement, retire early, right away, or, you know, fifty years later. So it's, it's a factor of that unfunded liability.
Well, I guess, and it may be a separate discussion maybe, but something simplistic to start with. But I'm just, again, there's a lot of factors we don't know. But since we are trailing a year or two, three years behind, we all know what's going on in the market. Things are gonna look a little bit different.
And we can, we can bring back a spreadsheet for you at the next session.
Thank you.
And, and, and I think being, aren't we a year or two behind because we're kind of at the mercy of CalPERS and their projections and stuff?
Yeah.
That's the, that's the part that I think is, is hard for you guys is you don't know what CalPERS is, we don't know what CalPERS is gonna do, right?
Yeah, I think we'll show, we'll, we'll be happy to share the numbers with you. I, I, I believe when you see the numbers, it's, it's not gonna be shocking like, like you would see with cities because I think the cities where they're struggling is, is public safety. The police and fire, they're just draining their budgets, and they're extremely expensive. And that's where they're always having problems where you're not gonna see that in this
Right, and are relatively, and I, I don't mean this in kind, but our relatively small staff kind of insulates us a little bit from some of those PERS things that, that we could get hit with.
But I think I understand what, what Dr. Douglas was asking, so I'll
Yeah, like when we add one, I wanna see the long-term effect of that, you know? Perfect, thank you.
Slide please. So now, here is the fiscal year, the second year, salaries and benefits. It, total salaries and benefits for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five is approximately four million. And here it is a seven percent increase from the prelim, the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four preliminary budget that I just presented. And this does not include any new position or changes to the personnel that were, that was not requested in the prior year. We estimated a five percent COLA, and again, a five percent merit increase for employees who are eligible. And then after salaries and benefits is operations and maintenance. First, again, we have administrative O and M, and then wastewater O and M. That's for the district yard. Total solid waste fund O and M is approximately six point three million. The major costs are the CRNR trash hauler and CRNR trash hauler, recycling, organics disposal. And the general manager will go into, into detail during his presentation, presentation in a little bit here. Total waste fund O and M excluding capital improvement projects and transfers is approximately three point four million. And the most significant increases are from the professional services account. Next slide, please. The most significant increases are from the, those accounts listed there, professional services. In professional services, those items listed there are new items. Each department will go over their budget requests in a little bit. So we have items in professional services account, contract engineering and inspection services, CRNR, five percent cost of living adjustment, public info, information, education, promotion, staff development, small tools and equipment, computer licenses, pump station maintenance, liability insurance, asset replacement. And then fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, total solid waste fund O and M is approximately six point three million. Again, the major costs are from CRNR, CRNR. Total, total wastewater fund O and M excluding CIP and transfers is approximately three point four million. Also, again, the most, most significant increases are from those accounts listed there. And then now, any questions so far?
Just kind of a quick question. Scott, we've talked about, you know, we've appealed to our supervisor and our Congress people about help with, with some of our, if, if we're awarded anything or if we get anything, will that affect this part of it? Is that, that's something separate, right?
Right.
We get to
You're talking about, you're talking about the, the Eldon, unfortunately, we, we haven't, we, we budget for the designs. We haven't budgeted anything for construction yet because most likely, if we can't get any assistance from the state or the federal government, we're gonna have to finance that project. And so I believe in your June study session, Mark Davis is gonna give you a question about financing on, on the different financing mechanism out there and what, what that entails. And, and so, so that, that'll be done in the future, but it won't affect the budget.
Well, when, when will Mark get that?
Tuesday session.
Can we get assistance from the county government?
We've asked county, we've asked supervisors fully, and unfortunately, he hasn't.
Hasn't responded.
Well, she, she's, yeah, has come through for us.
That's what?
Come through, has come through for us. She hasn't had, found the money for us. Yeah.
Curious.
No, we, we're trying.
So now I will go into the finance department budget request. Finance has two new line items in the professional services account. The first is the comprehensive parcel levy audit. This is the annual assessment that is currently being completed by staff. A customized report is required from Springbrook to complete the assessment. Springbrook is our financial software. The customized report was added to the software when we purchased the software way back then, I believe, two thousand four, two thousand five. And because it is a customized report that was added onto the software, it doesn't allow us to upgrade to the cloud version. So we're stuck on premise. To outsource the assessment, it will allow the district to upgrade Springbrook, which has so many more function to help us be more efficient, innovative, and provide better security. It will cost the district twenty-one thousand five hundred in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-two thousand two, two hundred in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five to hire consultant to perform the assessment. And it will cost the district a one-time fee to, in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, to upgrade Springbrook. Okay, and that's my two new items that I'm requesting. Happy to answer any questions you may have before I pass it on to the general manager to go into the solid waste department.
Are these numbers, you've already gotten bids or you've already gotten? Okay.
Okay, thank you, Caitlin. So I'm gonna just talk about the solid waste budget. So as, as Caitlin mentioned, CRNR did submit a, a rate adjustment of a five percent increase. The, as she mentioned, the, the CPI is five point one percent. But according to our new agreement with CRNR, that the max they can ask is five percent. So of course, they asked for the max is five percent. We are in the process of gathering data, giving us justifications for, for that increase. And then we'll be evaluating that information. And then we also have Mark Davis, he is coordinating a meeting with CRNR to review their books to see the, what the revenues or profit margin is. Then he can share that with you in a close, future close session. As I mentioned, as you might recall, the, any kind of rate adjustment with, you know, it's not automatic, has to be approved by the board. So we will come back with, to that before July one with all the information they submitted. And then you'll also have the information from Mark Davis, so you can have all that information to make, to make a decision. But we're assuming that the board is gonna approve five percent, so that's why we have it here. And if, if the board does approve a five percent COLA, then you can see the, the adjustments in the, the hauler, the recycling, the organic, organics rate for twenty-three, twenty-four. Now, twenty-four, twenty-five, you'll see it's just a point five percent COLA. Realistically, you probably anticipate a probably another five percent. But if we did that, then we're gonna be out, uh, uh, won't be a balanced budget. Also, we, we are gonna be doing a, a rate study where the adjustment, the rates will be adjusted in, in twenty-four, twenty-five. So the, the rate study would be a good time to consider any, a five percent COLA to make sure we have revenues. But the big, the big issue with the, the study is gonna be the SB thirteen eighty-three, all the expenses for SB thirteen eighty-three. We wanna definitely make sure we recuperate enough revenues to, for all the costs that's gonna occur for that program. Next slide, please. So these are the historical datas, again, it's basically what we know. It's hard to project what it's gonna be in the future, but based historically, this is what we think are gonna be the, the number of, of units for, or the homes that CRNR is gonna be collecting. It's, it's not a very large increase. Recycling is the same, we're not seeing a, a huge difference. We, and again, we don't know why the numbers, the tonnage is down. Even CNR is kind of baffled why the tonnage is down. So we're gonna continue assuming that it's gonna stay constant. The only really big difference we're gonna see is the organics. We are projecting organics will, will increase substantially. We're looking at, you know, three to five percent. So all those are projections. Next slide. So these, this is the cost, which twenty-three, twenty-four, when you, when you include the, the five percent rate adjustment requested by CNR, it's two hundred seventy thousand, four hundred dollar difference. And I do wanna mention that if the board does approve the five percent COLA for twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, there is no rate adjustments for the, for the residents. Any rate adjustments will occur in, in the, the twenty-four, twenty-five year, okay? And then again, the twenty-four, twenty-five, we're looking at just about twenty-nine thousand dollar difference. But again, I, I'm assuming that's gonna, that's gonna change once we do the, the rates, solid waste rate study. So we'll have to do budget adjustments probably earlier twenty twenty-four, for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. Next slide. So these are the couple of large items on the solid waste budget. As I mentioned, the solid waste rate study, fifty-five thousand dollars. So we wanna, we wanna get that off probably sooner than later. So, you know, probably in the summertime, we're gonna kick that off and start doing RAPs for qualified firms to help us prepare that study. And then we have the, the franchise hauler SB thirteen eighty-three compliance competition studies, which we currently do right now, but we kinda continue doing that thirteen, thirteen eighty-three to determine the contamination level. When we see neighborhoods that, that, that are exceeding the ten percent contamination levels, then, you know, we gotta do our outreach efforts, mailing letters and notifying them that if they don't change their habits by twenty twenty-four, we could find them. So we want, we wanna continue that, that Next, I, I just wanted to remind the board, back to twenty twenty-two, I did, I did recommend or suggested possibly in the future, we do like a reorg. Right now, it, the solid waste department is really, it's really operated by one person. And that person needed some help, so this was the suggestion. Right now, we are in the recruitment phase for the management analyst two position. I, I do have one more interview to go tomorrow, and then hopefully I can make a decision on the management analyst two. Our code enforcement officer, we are currently recruiting for the facility maintenance worker. When that position is filled, we will make our code enforcement officer full-time where he can dedicate a lot of his time on SB thirteen eighty-three, doing one out and making sure to track, you know, making sure the trash carts are emptied when they're supposed to be. Also looking for contaminations, scavenging, you know, full-time, you know, after lunch, you know, right now, he's, he's working like part-time or catching scavengers, well, now he can do it full-time. So the big question really likes is the office specialist, do we need another position for office specialists? Now, this position is not in the budget in, in both years. What we wanna wait is one, we, we, you'll hear later in the presentation from, from Diana, is that we wanna do a class and comp study. So what would, what we wanted to have, ask that consultant is, is, is this be a good fit? Having an alpha specialist, and what is that, that salary range? And then also, I wanna engage with the new management analysts too. It, it does he or she need that other person? Maybe, maybe that person is, is a, you know, can do everything by, by him or herself, I don't know. I wanna engage with that person first, but I do wanna bring this to your attention that there could be a possibility of another position in, in the solid waste department. And that position wouldn't go into effect until the twenty-four, twenty-five year. But we would come bring that back to the board's approval. I just wanna keep that out there and just keep you reminded that we're be coming back with you on this and in your future, so.
That question, okay. You're saying that our code enforcement officer is gonna be checking trash cans? I thought CNR was gonna do that.
It's, it's gonna be a combination of both, you know, I mean, there, there, you know, he, he can help out with CNR. Sometimes CNR, you know, it's gonna, we're gonna use both, both agencies. Well, primarily it would be CNR, but I mean, you can't
I'm just going back to what we talked about in previous.
And I also wanna mention that I didn't, didn't touch about the intern. We, we do have an intern right now, that intern is fully funded by the, the grant. And so once our intern here plans on leaving in, in a couple of months, going, going to school, and we don't plan on filling that position back, so we're not gonna have an intern once, once he's gone. So it's really gonna be down to really management analyst supervising the code enforcement officer and possibly an office specialist.
Scott, when you say checking trash cans, is, is that just lifting lids and and, and I guess I don't understand what value that is. If, if he lifts the lid and doesn't see any food waste, so what?
Yeah, it does, but if he does, then, then he can, you know, put a little notice on the cart and say, hey, look, FYI, you know, you need to separate your food.
Oh, you're talking about the recycling cart? Oh, oh, not the organics cart.
We wanna make sure that everything's, we're going to a source separating system. We wanna make sure that everyone is separating their waste correctly. We wanna make sure that everyone is separating their waste correctly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. Scott, in the staff report, mentioned CR, CR and R requested a 7.1% CPI increase.
Yeah, I think that was an error on their, on their part because it's a, if you look at the February to February, it's 5.1%.
But I thought they're capped at five.
So they're asking for five.
So they, that's why they, did they, where did the seven come from or the 5.1 or whatever?
1 is exactly like, that comes from the US Labor Department.
That's what the actual CPI is.
Yes, 7.1, I think that was an error on their, on their part. Cause it's not 7.1, it's 5.1. So the max is five, that's what they're asking for is five.
But last year's CPI, or CPI came in at seven and a half. And I think they, they were screwed their numbers up.
Okay. And then the, so in the budget, we could budget for five, but we will have a separate vote that says we, based on their numbers, based on discussion, we could say, ah, no, we'll approve three. And then that would be a budget adjustment or?
You have to have good justification for that, right? So we just can't say, well, I wake up in the morning, I want, no, you gotta have some good justification for all that information. We'll give you a recommendation and you can either approve our recommendation or go different directions. Totally up to you. But yes, that was my big issue, do not agree with automatic CPIs. It has to be approved by the board.
Right.
But if you remember last year, we didn't budget even a 5%. Or was it two years ago? We didn't budget the 5%. So that's when we had to adjust. This last go around, we instructed staff to include a 5% just so that it's reflected in the budget.
And that was my question. I, I'm good with that. It's reflected there. But if, for whatever reason, we didn't approve that, it would be adjusted in our budget going forward.
More revenues to our, to our budget.
And my ultimate point is for anyone paying attention out in the meta universe and all that, is we're not approving anything on a COLA CPI adjustment today. We are just forecasting that we may or may not. Thank you.
One last question on, CNR has historically calculated their COLA adjustments different than staff. And that may be the difference. It, it's not February to February. It's February, March, April, June, July, August, you know, and.
Historically, that might be true, but I think we learned from our mistakes that we didn't want to go down that route again. So that's when there's amendments, we did the amendment, we wanna make sure that.
Okay, but I would, so I'll be interested to see when you talk to CNR, what, how that process, if it's simplified to the same thing that staff endure with COLAs.
You know, and a lot of it depends. And I mean, five or six years ago, we were looking at being included with a different area, remember? And we adjusted, depends on what CNR uses for their labor statistic area as well as for us. We have to match.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Aren't we Long Beach, LA and, and yeah, okay.
That, who's my department or the solid waste department? Someone turn over to Nalani.
All right. Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. My department of three, which includes myself, Gina Tranio and Angela Kalanga, we are the district clerk, public information and community outreach department as well as IT. And currently helping Scott with the solid waste department as well. Our line items that we have this year, I'm gonna kind of work backwards and turn some of the IT information over to Gina. But we are projecting an $86,000 cost for elections in the year 24, 25. And that includes all the labor costs and the ballot counting and all things elections that we consolidate with the county of Orange. We also have, as you see, increases in the need for professional services, which included onsite IT manager, and I'll let Gina speak to that. We have previously gone over with the board, the need for increase for the three cart system for our communications campaign, as well as for the printing and all the education material that we'll be distributing for SB 1383. We are going to have some IT needs to replace our servers. And we have AV needs for this room to optimize the equipment that we currently have to promote our meetings. If there are any questions related to that, or if any additional details needed, we're here to help with that.
Well, we, we outsource the IT. And, and so basically, we just need someone to sit here in the office almost continuously.
Our IT needs have absolutely increased, much like what Caitlin was speaking to earlier about finding the appropriate softwares to use for some of the operations that we have. We need somebody who's gonna be more of a systems manager and onsite more often. We have had a huge increase in IT needs over COVID and then moving forward with additional staffing. So this individual will be helping with a lot of things, more than just changing passwords or troubleshooting little needs.
And maybe Gina's gonna address this. But when you talk about the professional services and IT stuff, are we looking, is any of that including cybersecurity? And I'm.
Absolutely.
Enhanced cybersecurity features and things like that?
Absolutely. Yes. Any other questions? No, thank you.
Okay, then we'll turn it over to Diana Wodorski. She's gonna talk about our human resources and risk management department.
Good morning, Mr. President and Board. So some of the items we have, our big ticket items would be, to start would be the classification and compensation study. According to our strategic plan, we do this every five years. And we are requesting to do this one six months early in 2024 is when it is due. But we'd like to do it early because we, as Scott spoke of, we do have some changes with the solid waste department reorganization. And so we do wanna look at that and consider that, especially with increased duties related to SB 1383. The code enforcement officer will be going full-time. We don't know, once the new management analyst two is on board, we'll have conversations and we'll discuss that, that with that person. Think that the, the class and comp study is an opportunity to look at our total rewards package benefits as well as looking at positions. We want to make sure that employees are working within their classification. We may need to do some reclassifications with that. We may need to look at this. They'll, they'll also look at the salary schedule. If we need to do any restructuring with that, they look at that. And the most important thing, the goal with this, the ultimate goal is to make sure the district remains competitive, to retain and to attract employees. And so this helps us to, to do that, the, the class and comp study that we've done previously. We've been able to just remain more competitive within the market. So it's just a comprehensive analysis of market trends, of the current status of what the district is doing, employees. So that's a valuable tool that we do use. The cafeteria increase, we, Caitlin talked about that. We have been aware for a while that we are below average in that area. And so staff did a survey of other local agencies and found that we are. So this is, this proposed increase would be bringing up to the average of other local agencies. Our employee plus two or more is, was really behind. So that one is probably the most significantly behind, but it's bringing all of them up to average level. Employee only, employee plus one and employee plus family. It's based upon an employee's selection of their medical tier. Some employees have medical for just employee. Some have employee plus, you know, two or more in their family. So we're looking to increase that. And then unfortunately, the liability insurance, that is also, that is increasing.
You're gonna say it's also ridiculous? It is, I mean, it's unbelievable.
Well, you can say that. But we did get a letter from SDRMA that the pool reinsurance rate increases based on early estimates are 15 to 20% of an increase from our reinsurance brokers. And then, you know, if you look into, we're adding a new, every time we add a new vehicle, that's a little bit more too, and as well as employees. So that's, does anybody have any questions?
It seems to me that the professional services for classification compensation studies, a lot of money. Do you remember what we paid five years ago?
I think it was 30 to 35. So 50 might be, we have more employees now and we are wanting them to look at a comp, take a comprehensive look at benefits. I know previous studies, we've included board of directors, their, their rates as well. So I don't know, it'll, that will of course be in the direction of the board, how comprehensive you would like it to be.
Does that budget include board of directors being included in there?
It, it can, yes. It would cover that.
It does seem a little bit high, but understand we are gonna go out to bid. Hopefully we'll get some good bids and the number of, we wanna make sure we have enough money.
You have not gone out to bid initially? You have not, okay. So that's just top amount you would pay.
Yes, we, we haven't yet, but that would be, and, and right now because of COVID, I'm hearing from other agencies that they are behind. So the contractors have, are, 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 like I said, they're behind, so.
It's kind of like roofing contractors right now. They can charge whatever they want, cause it doesn't matter. And that's a, just a fact of what's going on. I mean, from your business, you, you, you know that. Go ahead.
Timings, everything. So on the class and comp study, you'd mentioned it's a requirement every five years. What is that requirement?
Oh, it's part of our strategic plan.
Our own requirement, not a state requirement. Then you had mentioned, you know, staff had done research on the cafeteria plan themselves and, and made the recommendation to increase it to be competitive. Why couldn't we do, and I mean, it's all public record, say for all the entities in Orange County, do a comp study ourselves instead of paying 50 grand?
That one is tough to do because you would have a, a consultant that comes in that does this all the time, that knows all the other agencies, they've been there. They would have that knowledge where if the HR department would be, Tanisha and I, we don't have the full knowledge of what a whole city without, would each position, would, what, all we'd be able to do is look at job descriptions. With a consultant, it is, it is comprehensive. It looks at everything and, and on a larger scale. I think if we're going to do it, we need to do it right.
The consultants have more resources than we do. Like, like Dana says, you know, it's, it's, it's more than just looking at salaries. You gotta look at, you gotta pull the job descriptions.
Right.
That's a lot of work, right?
Oh, yeah.
For Dana, Tanisha, that's just, that's just too much. And so that's why we have a professional consultant that's done this before. They know what they're doing. They know who to reach out to. They can gather all that information. They have more than two people to do this. It, it's, it's just, in our opinion, a, a better way of, of spending staff time and money to get what we want.
I mean, I just think for, I'm just gonna say 20 reviews for our internal staff, I don't care, for 35 to 50 grand, that seems absurd to do a comp study of various entities. I mean, I understand what you're saying, the time with our staff doing it, but that just is.
Well, I, again, we, I mean, we could, we could lower it if you wanna lower it, you know, like 30,000 we could, but we just don't like coming back to the board, asking for more, more money if, if the bids come out higher than 30,000.
Yeah, no, I'm just wondering, can we reclassify what we want in a bid? Because again, it just, my goodness. That just doesn't seem necessary to pull the various other entities in Orange County. I mean, it could be done with, if we had 10 more in the HR department, it could be done ourselves. So I'm just like, it just.
Maybe we can show you what a last consultant did and you can, you can see the kind of detailed work that they do. It, it is a lot of work. It really is. And we wanna make sure that our employees are, are, are paid well, doesn't have, again, doesn't have to be the high end, but we wanna make sure it's fair and, and, and adequate to everyone else in, in the county. We wanna make sure that our employees are getting good benefits. It, it's something to, it's again, to compare that with, with all the other agencies in Orange County, you're talking, you know, 30 cities, 30 special districts. Now, it's not, we're not going to all of them, but you wanna get a good, good handful. And that, that's a lot of, a lot of time.
And I'm sorry, Scott. And I think also we are unique because we are so small. So our positions, it's not apples to apples, like with what the city of Costa Mesa, what their management analyst does. It would be, it is very different. The consultant will take the time to talk to each employee to get a, a real sense of what that employee's day-to-day duties are. And then they'll compare it to the, to the job description. It, it really is comprehensive, the information that, that they get. And Tanisha and I do what we can. We do surveys all the time. We're always looking and comparing with their other agencies. But to have a professional come in, like, like Scott said, they have the resources available to them that they can use for the study. Because I think our ultimate goal, like I said, is we, you know, we don't wanna be the highest paid, but we definitely wanna be at least average or a little above average to attract and retain a workforce that can, can do the job they need to do. They have the competencies that, that, that they need to serve the district best. And so I think that's why we have every five years in our strategic plan because we're, we're always changing and evolving, as you can, as you heard earlier.
I agree. I always throw off the high bid and the low bid and usually somewhere in between. But high, I would say higher than average would be a good spot for us. But I know the city of Costa Mesa just did this, at least for a couple of their departments, and realized they were on the low end. Now they're number one in the county. So I'd be curious what they did for, say, you know, their parks and community service, things like that, that they just did this. Would this be something that would come back to the board when it does go out to bid? So that we could help with the scope of work, call it?
Sure, we can, we can definitely do that. I mean, it's a $50,000, assuming it's.
Right.
Well, it's within my authority to sign. So it's something, a country we wouldn't bring it back to the board. But if the board wants to see it, we can definitely bring it back to you. Not a problem.
And just, my personal request would be to take a crack at the scope of work, yeah.
The city just did it recently and we can look at what, what it.
I, I would love to know what the city of Costa Mesa did because obviously they had a lot more employees in the parks and community services. So I'd just be, it'd be an interesting tidbit to know.
Look at, bring that back. That'd be interesting. You know, that can help us maybe fine tune this number.
Yeah, cause when I was told, we were like number 30 or whatever, and now we're number one. It's like, oh, okay. They got that info from somewhere, you know? Awesome, thank you.
Diana, you said we're gonna do this study, the comp and class study, six months early. So.
Yes, because we are looking at having to reorganize or possibly reorganizing the solid waste department. That's a big factor. And we have, we've, we've had some staffing changes. So we just are, are looking to, to make sure that we're being compliant. Like I said, we don't want employees working outside of their classification and doing duties that are above their, their class.
Well, so is this study going to be done before we hire the, the potential new employees?
It, well, we will be hiring the management analysts to replacing the B-list position. That will be before the study. The study wouldn't be done until after July 1. And I, the part-time finance position would not be hired till January of 2024. The engineering department, that would not be until after July as well, that, that assistant.
Let's see, you said, you said our goal is to be mid, mid-range of the comp and class study.
At least.
I know Orange County Sand District's goal is to be at 75%. Most agencies are going to go for the average. I don't know why Orange County Sand District, you know, set theirs at 75% of, of the ranges, but.
They probably did that for recruitment purposes.
Yes.
Pardon?
Recruitment purposes is probably why they did that, to try to recruit people.
Was that figure set up when you were there or is that something happened after you left those CSD?
I take. I take the fifth on that. I don't, I don't have a clue when that happened. I take, I take the fifth on that. I don't, I don't have a clue when that happened. I, I just know that, you know, the deals, they're going through the same processes and, um, so they have a vastly different number and cost.
Yeah, and that's, and that's the board policy. That's, that's, their board made that, that decision. That's their.
Yes, I know.
So that's what they, you know, for, for help for recruitment and retention, they want to be up to seventy-five percent. Now, now again, it's, it's the board's purview, what, what you, we, we think, we think fair, slightly above fair is, is, but you want to, if you want to prove a seventy-five percent, that's, that's your prerogative.
Yeah, I'm sure staff would be.
You got a lot of interest.
The, the, the liability insurance, though, that's a number on top of what we presently pay? Or is that the total cost?
The total.
That's the, that's the.
Total, um, anticipated, that's the, the latest correspondence from SDRMA that we received. That was, that was the number.
My question is really to Mike, what do we, what do we pay now?
Well, I think, I think we're paying just under three forty-five now, are we? In, not in defense of anything that gets charged there, but, um, you all pay insurance, car insurance, home insurance and things like that. Insurance companies are asking for twenty-five percent rate increases. The state, the state generally allows a six point nine percent increase, but companies are saying, we need twenty-five percent just to be solvent. And if they're not getting that, they're leaving the state of California. They're, they're gone, you know? Not to belabor this, but GEICO Insurance closed all their offices. Uh, AAA is not writing insurance anymore. State Farm is doing some things that I'm not happy with, but it's just, that's part of the market. That's the insurance market right now and it's. Are we low on our assumptions then? No, no, I think, um, I think we're right on. I mean, I'm talking about the three sixty-three. Unfortunately, we're right on.
And that, that number did come from SDRMA.
Right.
That's the, the anticipated, yes.
Terrible. Go ahead. One more I'll ask. Insurance or Diana, uh, with that number, is that at our high EMR and how much longer does the EMR? It's usually it's five years or there about, something like that.
Well, it.
That's liability, that's not workers' comp. And there's no EMR on, on, on liability. Yeah, I, sorry, I, I kind of thought that's what you were going, well, you haven't even talked about our insurance co, our workers' comp.
No, but that did, our, our Emod did go down to from, I think it was a hundred and sixty-five percent. It went down to a hundred and forty-five. So it, so it did go down.
I thought we, I thought we, I thought it was lower than that.
No, it's, it's still above a hundred percent. So again, the goal is to get it below a hundred percent.
It needs to be eighty-five or so. Anyway, you guys are working on that and you're doing a good job safety-wise and that's what's.
Turning the right ways, but that was.
And so I guess that would be my question. I had liability and comp mixed up, but where is our comp in this? Cause.
Our workers' comp renewal amount is, uh, one hundred and nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine. That's the, the projected cost. Last year it was ninety-one thousand nine hundred or six hundred and ninety-eight thousand.
But even though our EMR Emod.
Went down.
Went down, went up.
Don't, don't forget, what, I, I said that the wrong way, but with workers' comp, we have to look at what the state, what, with, with the fund.
Right.
Is charging. So it's the, the liability is much more dependent on actual cost, whereas workers' comp is actual cost and Emod's. Plus it's what the state says you have to charge to get, to get the underwriting and to get the, the, I can't think of the word, the financial backing that we get from the state.
Right, because my broker just earned himself a bonus then because ours went down drastically.
I, I, I wish I had premiums like that in my agency because I wouldn't be here. I'd be in the Bahamas talking via Zoom.
This is a good question. If our Emod went down, then why did our costs go up? So we can pose that question, ask your man, bring it back to you.
I, I, I can tell you right now, it's, it's because of what, what CSAC and Prism, uh, Workers' Comp Fund is, is charging for the, the underwriting of it. I mean, the companies that are providing the reinsurers, because that's what pools do, they get reinsurance, right? And those caught, the reinsurance costs, they've been negotiating, I will tell you, SDRMA does a great job of negotiating with the reinsurers and the excess, extra people. But it's California. I mean, we, we operate in California, but do check.
But yeah, I, I do check. If there's another explanation on.
Well, and I do want to note that the workers' comp is under the salary and benefits. That's what you'll see it in the budget.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay, oh, thank you. Thank you, Dana. Uh, now I want to turn this over to Mark Esker, our, our district engineer. He's going to talk about the engineering department.
Board president, uh, board members, thank you for, um, listening to me this morning. I want to go over a couple of things. These prices on the right are basically additions to the budget and based, uh, things that we didn't budget necessarily the last couple of fiscal years. So the first thing I want to talk about is the new position, uh, but let me start out by saying why. The best practice in wastewater systems is to basically spend about one percent of your system value each year in renewals. For our system and, and talking with RBH, um, that's a CIP outlay of about two point five million dollars a year. We've traditionally spent, um, uh, anywhere from one point four to one point six million dollars a year. And this next couple of years, we're looking to move that up closer to two million, maybe two point one million dollars. So with the increase of projects and, and, and outlay, you're going to have more paperwork, more administrative tasks. And up to the point where, um, I really am asking you for some help here. The admin position will shift clerical from me and the engineering technician uh, to an admin person so that we can spend our time on technical issues, construction issues and permit issues. As an example, the other day, our engineering permit tech was talking with a customer about forty-five minutes on the phone. While he might have had to spend some time with that customer, if that had been vetted by an admin person, I think we would have spent a little less time and a little less money initially vetting that particular customer. Uh, but things that we haven't been doing, for example, is organizing our permit files and preparing closed projects for destruction. This activity hasn't been performed since twenty sixteen and I'm happy to show you the front office and you'll see the wall of paperwork that I'm going to say is overdue for destruction, but it takes quite a bit of effort as an example to go in and look at each permit. Is it still open or is it closed? And if it is open, have we done the inspections? And so there's homework going into Springbrook, looking in City Works, uh, understanding what's going on and then, uh, tagging those files for the trucks, destruction, then working with our public information office and this destruction policy to get those destroyed. Organizing, uh, engineering files, drafting, um, um, documents and presentations under my review. Also monthly invoices, documentation for finance. As an example, each month I pull up, uh, dig alert tickets. Uh, and I have to go mine, uh, dig alert tickets and that's probably an hour's worth of work. That's just one example. And so that could be shifted from me to the, to an admin person. Yesterday I was trying to set up a, a state of California Department of Industrial Relations, uh, project number. The system, state of California is, in my opinion, a very poor system. That system crashed twice while I was doing the work and I spent forty-five minutes trying to get a DIR number for, for a particular project. Again, I could shift that to an admin person so I can spend my time working on technical issues. And then this person could work with the clerk of the board, uh, finance on various other, other, other items. Item number two, permit and fixture fee. This is a one-year expense. Uh, we haven't looked at fees since they, the fixture fees were updated in twenty sixteen and permit fees were updated in twenty eighteen. Unfortunately, there have been some state, uh, changes in state law that now say that, uh, we have to have, um, unequivocal, I guess, uh, uh, information that shows and justifies and documents why we're asking for increases. And so we're, I'm asking to hire a professional, um, accountant to, to look at permit and fixture fees and help us set those for the next rate, uh, rate period accordingly. Number three, dig alert, I'm asking for thirty thousand dollars of additional money so that we can, uh, go out and mark gravity pipes. Our procedure has typically been to mark force mains only. I think it was last summer, Edison hit one of our sewer lines and I think uh, between us and them sharing the cost because we did not mark our gravity sewer, um, we shared the cost and I think our portion was forty thousand or forty-five thousand dollars uh, to, to make that repair. Um, so this extra thirty thousand is to pay a, a service, uh, or a consultant to go out and, and mark gravity sewers when there's construction or, or activities going on within the vicinity of our, of our gravity pipelines as well as our force main. The item number four, I'm asking for fifty-two thousand the first year and fifty-five thousand, uh, the second year for our arc flash and electrical coordination study. And if, about seven, eight years ago, NFPA, uh, eight twenty uh, and the national electric code required that all, I'll say, switchgear and electrical, uh, systems be studied for the potential for explosive hazards and then that, I'll say that energy should be listed on the switchgear itself and what protective, um, equipment the staff must be used or wearing in order to operate the switchgear and operate the systems. We did the first four pump stations this past year. We're looking to do four or five, um, the next year and then another three or four after that. In, in between those, I'm also looking as we do pump station rehabs to add a, an electrical item here and there to do arc flash. So the goal is after the next two to, two years or so, we will have all of our pump stations properly labeled so that we comply with the, with the various codes. The last item for ten thousand dollars is I want to basically run a trial and demonstrate, uh, sewer line, um, uh, I guess I'll say manhole CCTV and NASCO condition assessments for our, uh, manholes. We currently do that once every ten years. We spend, uh, I don't know, I'm going to say, uh, somewhere between a hundred and fifty and a little over two hundred thousand to CCTV our entire system. We do not CCTV our manholes. I would like the same level of documentation and condition assessment on our manholes so that when RBH and I assess the manholes, uh, we have positive documentation, uh, photos, video and, and NASCO, uh, ratings for all defects from the very, very top of the manhole, all the way down to the base of the, of the, uh, the, the manhole. So I'd like to try, uh, uh, videoing a few of our manholes each of the next two years, see how it goes, see the information, confirm how many manholes we can assess. And then, and then move forward with a potentially a full-scale program the two years following that. I will say that, uh, a CCTV company can, if they have a three hundred and sixty degree camera, they can actually assess the condition of a manhole in about three to five minutes per manhole. So they just run down the street, pop the manhole, drop their camera in. Literally, it's about a, a minute to, to do that, um, camera. And then they take the film in and they have professionals that just sit up behind a desk all day, uh, doing NASCO coatings of that video and then we receive all of that file. So that's what that particular item is. Next slide, please. We are, uh, this, this next couple of years, we're looking to, to, um, uh, spend about one point four million on, on capital for the next fiscal year and then one point nine million fiscal year after that. What's not necessarily indicated here and, and it is in the green chart is there's about four hundred and eighty thousand that we want to transfer to pay back asset or asset funds. And then in year two, there's another, I think almost a hundred and fifty thousand to transfer back to asset funds to pay back the money that we moved from asset management fund to the wastewater fund in order to do the Eldon force main projects. But out of all of these projects that we have listed here, there's five projects that I'm looking to add over the next two years. They've, uh, Twenty First Street Force Main, what that, this project entails is, um, relining a ductile iron pipe that crosses the state route fifty-five at Twenty First Street. It probably, well, the project involves some other things like connection to the pump station and things like that. But I, I'm a little concerned in that that's a high spot that crosses the freeway. That's where, um, vapor will tend to, uh, congregate and, uh, uh, we need to, we'd like to line that because that's where corrosion's going to occur is at the crown of the pipeline. And so I'm recommending that we proceed with this project. Sea Bluff Pump Station, the, on the left, it's the third from the bottom. That was a developer designed and built pump station. The pumps do not meet our current standards. The piping was, uh, defined by the, um, consultant. And so the first year, we want to do some of the design work and then we will budget that project the next year. In addition to rehabbing the, uh, upgrading new pumps, new piping, um, and, and any other mechanical system, we're, we're going to conduct an arc flash coordination study for that one in order to comply with the codes. And if there's anything that comes out of that study that requires upgrade for non-compliant electrical system, we will do that work as well. The next item down below Sea Bluff, which is the second from the bottom on the left-hand side, is a harbor generator. I think that's, um, one of the risks that we still have from an electrical perspective. That station does not have a standby, permanent standby generator. So it relies on staff being paged off hours. If there's a major electrical outage or something, it, 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 um, relies on staff first getting the page, responding to the yard, getting a generator checked out, getting it shipped over there, um, plugging it in. And depending on the time of the day on a Saturday or Sunday, um, we have probably an hour less of retention time on that station. And believe me, when you're trying to set up temporary systems, an hour doesn't seem like a lot of time when you're actually out there. And I think, um, Director Rooten can testify to that. Um, things are happening really fast when you're, when you're, when you're trying to set up emergencies. So I think that's our biggest risk and I'm looking to, to begin to somehow spot a real estate, uh, design a project and install a project. Um, there's quite a bit of money that we're looking to budget for this project. One of the reasons why is that we're potentially looking at fuel cell technology rather than internal combustion engines, but that's all to be determined under the project. Uh, so we're looking to add a, 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 a project for that. And then the last item is the Mendoza Pump Station. I'd like to ultimately, I'm sorry, California Pump Station is on the right-hand side, second from the bottom. Uh, that is a project to look at adding a redundant force main and, and some minor rehabilitation to the California Pump Station. We're in the process of modifying pump stations, uh, based on priority and risk to dual force mains so that if we have a, uh, force main issue, we can always switch over to the other force main while we affect repairs. Irvine Ranch Water District, um, several years back had a single point of failure in their force main near PCH. I can't remember how many thousands of gallons made it down to the beach and they refined, um, a lot of money because they had one force main in their system. And quite frankly, from a, a best practice and a responsibility perspective, I think we should be moving all of our stations to do a force main, but over time. Uh, last is Mendoza, last on the bottom on the right-hand side. That's, uh, uh, some money to begin to rehabilitate the force main. Uh, and I call it, uh, the force main or outfall from that, from that particular station. Not sure what we're exactly, we're going to do there, but we'll need to probably add some money in, uh, in the following fiscal, uh, two fiscal year budgets. So those are the five new projects that we're adding. Uh, and so, uh, it looks like it's one point four million and one point nine million. It's actually a little higher than that based on money that we're going to use to repay back the system. That concludes my report, I believe. Are there any questions?
Remind me where the harbor jet, harbor pump station is.
Harbor Pump Station is located, uh, wood, near, I guess it's slightly west of.
Wilson.
Um, are on Wilson, slightly west of Harbor. There's a little, um, Hispanic market there.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's, and I think there's an apartment complex right next door. We're right in that, in front of that apartment complex. We're right in that, in front of that apartment complex. We approached the Jack in the Box a while back to to secure land and they pretty much blew us off. And so we're going to try to approach them again. I am looking at across the street at the dry cleaners to see if perhaps there's something there. There's also another apartment complex directly across. If we could secure easement or land from them, we might be able to do something. But yeah, that's where we physically put the generator, but it's just west of Harbor on Wilson.
Yeah, that's kind of what I assume.
That's what I thought. That was my question.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. Just a question on the the administrative assistant, which I think you probably desperately needed a while ago, so I'm all for it. Where did the 85 come from as we, Diana just shared some of the salaries? Is that just the going rate right now in the market or where did that number come from?
I'm going to actually let our finance manager or HR manager answer that question.
I, right now, we're using the current salary range for the admin assistant that we have right now for this current fiscal year with the five or the 6% COLA for the first fiscal year and then the 5% COLA for the second fiscal year. And and of course salaries and benefits included in those two.
So this is, so, okay, that was my, the Bennys are included in this. That's, that makes more sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Echols. That's a good question and it's something that I've been working with Caitlin on.
Just, I didn't get your payback. What year do you pay back?
You're talking about the money that we took from the asset management fund to fund the, to fund the Eldon redundant force main system. The first year of this next two year budget, we're looking to take that 480,000 right there and and move that, repay that portion of it. And then in 24, 25, there's 143,000 dollars in the second year of the upcoming budget. And then that will fully repay or refund the asset management fund and bring it back to the levels that that you've asked, you've requested that we maintain that particular fund at.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mark?
So right now, there is a generator in the yard. The the staff have to drag out to get to get to the harbor if if it's in need. And you said that detention time in Harbor Pump Station is about an hour?
Yeah, my my understanding and and is that it's about an hour or so depending on time of day. So I'm giving you, I guess I will say I'm giving you worst case scenario.
Right now, you can't even go down Wilson Street. If that happened in the middle, Wilson Street's closed right now for the city to fix what they saved up.
Well, in emergencies, I think you could get.
I'm sure, but it'd be tough.
Yeah, I don't know, we'd get in there, President Schaefer, we would, we would get in there, I guarantee.
There's what, 4,500 brick manholes or 4,500 manholes in a system?
Yeah, I'm going to say it's probably that much. I might, well, yeah, total manholes are probably over 5,000. So I'm going to say your number's probably accurate.
So the rehabbing of the the present manholes is based on staff's recommendation?
I guess it's it's a couple of things. Number one, fund limitations to rehabilitate the brick manholes. Our Steve Kano, our wastewater superintendent, does provide a list of of manholes that he recommends. Gets rehabilitated. He has implemented a program this year where he's got a couple of staff that go out and visually take a, they pop the manholes and they're systematically trying to go through the system to determine if we have any ticking time bombs out there where something might be failing. He's trying to document and address the manhole conditions. And so between his recommendations, what his staff is finding, RBH and I are using that to develop the projects based on the funding limitations that that we have. Now, I say funding limitations. Under the rate study, I tried to increase the value and I did provide more money for manhole rehabilitation. But based on the Eldon force main, the Eldon emergency bypass project, harbor pump popping up, there were projects that, maybe a couple others that where we had to start making some changes on what do we spend the money on? And because, you know, based on income from the rates, we could only outlay so many dollars. And so I need a couple of years to get back on track on rehabbing the the manholes. But we are looking to increase and go from, I think, 50 or 60,000 to to spend a little more money each year the next couple of years. So this next year, I think I I'm more than double. And then and then we do add a little more in year two than the current outlay of 50 or 60,000 dollars per year.
Yeah, I think it'll be another 100 years before you get through all those manholes.
Well, that that is true. And and again, we do, in four years from now, we'll have another rate study and we'll be looking, you know, we're, we're not going to change our capital outlay by revolution. It's got to be evolution and we got to, we got to mind our rate pairs. And so hopefully over time, we'll be able to fund some of these things a little more proactively, I guess.
Yeah, well, I think when we do the, when Mark Davis does the assessment of how to pay for the Eldon repairs, you know, there could be some money put in that. Not a significant increase, but.
We can certainly do that to kick off the the program. But I think ultimately, we have to have, in my opinion, we we should have a good base so that we're not relying on loans to do our CIP. That's what I would recommend.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
All right, now I'm going to turn over to Steve Kano, he's our wastewater maintenance superintendent.
But before, before the illustrious award winner goes, do we need to take a five minute biology break? And where are we on the program?
Steve's the last department head and then Caitlin will do a wrap up and then we're done.
Let's, do we need a five minute break? I'm seeing heads going up and down, so it's just a five minute break, okay?
Operations for the wastewater department.
All right, thank you. Good morning, President Schaefer and members of the board. So I will go over the, our items that we're requesting for the wastewater division. So the first one, we have a crane truck. Currently, it's like a 2012, 2013 model. And we are looking for a smaller truck with the same capabilities as our truck has now, which is a crane to handle our largest pumps, like an Eldon, 60 horsepower, 60 horsepower pumps, they're about 2,000 pounds each. Also, the crane truck, we're going to get also the welder on it, like current truck has it for tack welding manhole covers if they become loose. We don't want any accidents happening or car damage, so we'll tack weld them before we can get to it and replace it with a newer set, probably composite manholes. Also, it'll be outfitted with a pressure washer. The crew uses this to clean the pump station wells, clean off the pumps when we pull them out. Also, it will have a compressor also. Also, being a smaller unit, it's going to be easier for us to get it into some of the smaller pump stations. We're looking for probably like a F-550. The one we currently have is a F-750. And I don't know if you guys seen it, but it's a large truck, so we like to go smaller with the next one. Okay, for item two, with the new employees we hired, our parking lot space has been diminishing. You know, with the new employees, we need additional parking spaces for their vehicles. And also with the new crew, we purchased a new Vector truck and also two new smaller pickups that the crews use for traffic control or checking manholes out there. So we are running out of space. And what we would like, our crew would like, is if we could demolish that building, the Hitchcrafter old building. With that, we would create some more space. Also, I'd like to remind you, we're, we're going to be getting soon three bypass trailers. And they're large, I think they're like 20 foot each length. And we're, should be getting these any day now, so we're getting three of those. Also, on our lot, we also have all our generators and bypass pumps. And we need them strategically placed. And, you know, for after hours emergencies or even during the day, we need to get to them pretty quick. So right now, some stuff's in our garage. There's stuff in that Hitchcrafter's building and we just need to get to it quickly. So that was, hopefully, that's our request for demolishing that building. Okay, item three, Lou. All right, with the new crew we got, so we got three trucks running out. And our oldest truck is a 2013 back on and it's coming to its limit. We've been putting a lot of money into it lately. Since 2021, we had a a new app for doing our pre-trips and keeping track of all our invoices for our vehicles for, you know, bid inspections or just miscellaneous repairs. So for on this unit, we spent over about 25 grand in just repairing stuff on that. So we'd like to replace that with also another Vector. And we have two current vectors. We just like to keep our trucks generalized so the guys are experienced with all the trucks so we don't have to, you know, one operator's used to this truck. So we like to keep it general. Also, for item number four, Mark touched upon the study we did. So the last study we did was for Irvine and Harbor, our larger stations. And while they did the study, we found that Irvine had some concerns and also at Harbor. So we have some repairs we need for like Irvine. We need to install a main disconnect breaker and a transfer switch installed at the panel for our safety. And at Harbor, the study, we found out that the transfer switch and the wiring are both underrated at that station. And we need to have that updated so our guys are safe. Item number five, our crew, Tony and Chris, they've been doing some research and they found that the 777 units, they are devices that can prevent hazard from arc flash without opening any panels right now. So with the 777s, they are, it's displayed outside the panel. And on that display, it shows amps, voltage, all the readings from the pump without opening the panel. So there's no arc flash happening. So we plan to do 10 this year and 10 the following budget. And lastly, our pump overhauls. This is money budgeted for if we ever need to do emergency repairs on our pumps. Currently, we stock a pump, extra pump in our stock for each station. But sometimes, you know, we'll put the stock, the one we have in stock, we'll put it in use. And the one we pull out, sometimes they need total overhauls, you know, bearings, seals, impellers. So we budget that money towards those repairs. Last year, we did one overhaul for, I believe it was Irvine Pump, and we had to totally rebuild it and that cost 20 grand. So these are the items we're requesting. You have any questions for me?
On the demo of the old building, which I agree could be utilized better, that space at the very least. If I remember correctly, can that, those funds be drawn from the account that we like, for instance, that we're doing the landscape improvements out of here since that? I could argue as a community benefit.
Let's say check with Alan.
We'd have to check with Alan on that one. He's, he's the one that gives us the green light, how we can spend that money. So I'll make a little note, we'll bring that back to you.
Oh, yeah, I just think, you know, so seldom are we able to tap that fund, so to speak. But I could come up with several reasons for community benefits, so just might be worth looking into, but thanks.
I would, I agree with you and in discussions with Alan, he thought that this was, this would be able to be funded because it it's a benefit to the entire agency. So rather than one specific area like a pump station or a specific sewer. So so I think tentatively, we're going to be able to do that. But Alan, until he gets the referral and then we ask him to look into it, he won't give me an official ruling on that or decision on that. But I'm going to say I think it's going to be able to be used out of that fund.
Yeah, and just the surrounding area, you could argue about beautificate. And there's a million different things you could sell, so see what Alan says, I'll be curious. Awesome, thank you.
Steve, how many emergency generators do we have at the yard?
We have around, let's see, six smaller units, three older units, two bypass pumps. And then the bypass trailers come in and we'll have three of those.
So it's a lot. And then, and then, and most of those, it wouldn't be cost effective to locate them at a, at the pump station. I know you're talking about harbors, you know, we're talking about 6, 700,000 dollars to put the A generator there. So it's out of the question that, you know, we're going to have to continue to store those generators at the yard.
Yeah, before we acquired this property, we had them scattered at.
They were mainly at the fairgrounds.
Yeah, and then we had some at the campus over there at OCC. So they were spread out and it was kind of a hassle keeping track of them, especially when I had the, our SoCal fleet to come out to service them all. They'd have to, you know, locate them all. I'd have to send guys with them to find them all.
Is that the generator that services Harbor?
That one right there is, let's see.
I mean, it's huge.
Yeah, it's the bigger one. No, the one at Eldon is behind the wall. It's got graffiti all over it. It got tagged when it was at Eldon that whole time.
The generator did?
Yeah.
Was it complimentary stuff or probably not?
No.
Who makes the equipment? You were talking about item number five. You know, it's kind of off the record question, but who who makes the equipment?
I can get back to you on that. Tony has all the detailed information for that.
Answer Steve. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And then Lou, if you can go back to slide number three for me, please. I just want to add that from what Steve just said, the transfers in and out at the end of each fiscal year, the line item. So for fiscal year 23, 24, at the end, on attachment A, page two, at the end of the line item budget, the transfers in and out section, Steve mentioned that to replace his train crane truck for 191,000. There's 170,000 that the district has set aside during the year. So that during this budget, we're requesting to transfer 170,000 from the asset replacement. I'm sorry, my hands are shaking.
Be cool.
So we're requesting to transfer from the asset replacement fund. Um, so we're requesting to transfer from the um asset replacement fund into the wastewater fund of a hundred and seventy thousand here. And then, um,
Well, let me, let me ask you, Caitlin, that's the fund that Director Echols was talking about?
No, that's the asset replacement fund, that's Fund Forty, that's where, um, we purchase an asset. And we, um, set aside, let's say for the truck, ten, ten years. So for, um, example, in the second year, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, when we purchased the um combo truck back in two thousand thirteen, we, um, set aside, the life of the truck was ten years, we set aside how much, uh, we, um, how much we set aside each year, so that now in two thousand twenty-three, um, we have enough money to purchase a new truck.
Okay, yeah, I think, I think the, the fund Director Echols was talking about was called Capital Facilities or?
Facility Revolving Fund, so I'll, I'll get into that after this.
And those are fees that are generated. Yeah, they're restricted, but they're generated from, um, Okay, fixture fees, yeah, okay.
So, and the fixture fees, we're asking, um, like Mark mentioned earlier, we're doing a rate study in the first budget year. Um, so in the second year budget, um, for the, um, combo truck, we set aside four hundred thousand. So we're asking to transfer four hundred thousand from the asset replacement fund into the wastewater fund. And then, um, also, we're asking to transfer fifty thousand from the facility revolving fund to the wastewater fund to start the second phase of the landscaping. Um, and that's just the start, um, for the second phase. So, and that's the end of my preliminary budget presentation, any questions?
Yeah, I've got one more, I didn't cat, I didn't see it, but um, under programs, uh, our community shredding and compost event. I know we forego that this year because the city was duplicating, but uh, can we get that back in or did I miss it?
Yes.
Part of the CRNR contribution that we used for that?
They bought, they gave us some fun, or they donated some things, but I know we had initially budgeted, I'll call it ten grand, maybe twelve.
So yes, that's actually still in the budget, um, the program that, um, if you go to slide, you go to slide number eight? No, it's not capture here, oh, okay, yeah, the attachment will be better, whoops, stop, 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 go up right there, can you make this bigger? So this program's here, just the school battery program, that's different. Um, now if you go to page number five, please, Lou? Or six, I'm sorry, six, go down one more.
There it is.
Put it in here.
Uh, compost giveaway shredding event, okay.
So this, this attachment here, so attachment A, the budget detail for selected account. So this right here, it's the detail of selected account. So if you look at pub, public info, education promo, the total is two hundred ninety-three thousand. This total here, if you go to the line item, uh, which is on page one.
Yeah.
If you go to that account, that across, that should be promo should be right here.
Two ninety.
Two ninety-three right there, I'm sorry, my hands, I don't wanna point anyone.
All good, no, I was, I was looking in the wrong place, I thought it'd be a program, so, okay, that's as long as it's in there and thirty-five uh is the appropriate amount based on what we spent last Okay, perfect, and then uh, just a general, or another question, um, well, first a comment. Thank you all, all the district heads for being here, I think it adds a lot of value and it's, thank you for taking the time out of your day to do that. And then a big thank you on a balanced, a true balanced budget, if I'm correct. And then my question on that is, at least uh since I've been aware, last several budget cycles, we've used reserves to balance. How long's it been since we've had a true balanced budget? I mean, that is, I gotta be honest, that is something we should be proud of and promoting.
But you gotta, but you gotta understand, we, we went into deficit on a purpose because we had too much money in the solid waste fund and we gave that money, we did a rate, rate, um, reduction. Now, I mean, I'd never heard districts given rate reductions before.
Yep.
So that was why we did that, and so the goal was to get our, our fund balance down to two billion dollars and we achieved that.
Yep, no, I think it's, it's just a big deal to me, so if it's been ten years or even more, whatever, that's a big deal. So thank you for presenting a balanced budget and I think one that makes sense, but we'll talk more about it in the coming days, so thank you.
I was just gonna say, Deco, with Director Echols said, um, first and foremost, thank you Caitlin for giving us a budget that is balanced. But probably more important to people like me, it's, it's understandable. I mean, so many budgets can what, you know, we don't, there's no wonderment with, with, with me on this. I think you and your staff did an outstanding job getting this together. And like, like Brett said, having all of you here this morning, um, I don't know whose idea it was, Scott, but it was a good idea. And, and congratulations and thank you all
Yeah.
for, uh, for participating and making, again, making it understandable. Your request, I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at all your requests. Um, but from my point of view, I didn't see anything up there that, that made me scratch my head, why, why are we doing that? What you're asking for, you know, and all the things that I saw helps us to say to our rate payers, here's what we're doing with your money and this, this stuff makes sense, so thank you all for doing, for doing.
Well, Caitlin, I wanted to ask, um, we, we have rate increases. Are the rate increases that we approved for the wastewater fund in, in effect or? And is that the reason that we have a balanced budget? Because we are having significant rate increases the first two years of that rate increase and then none for the, the?
I wouldn't say significant, but yes, there were two rate increases, but yes, because of those two rate increases, it helped us balance the budget. If we, if we didn't have those, we, we'd have to go in the reserves.
And the reserves are all, um, the, the?
Asset management fund.
Yeah, the, the, well, the, um, there, the twenty-five to thirty percent is our policy to have those reserves.
And if that didn't cover it, we'd have to go to asset management fund, so it's, there was whatever money we had available, we'd have to dip into that. We're saving for a rainy day, we'd have to.
Yeah, um, I have a couple other questions that, I think a last staff offline be- because they weren't necessarily addressed here. But, um, in, in the wastewater fund, we show some numbers like forty-five million dollars. Well, I'll, I'll ask that question offline because I don't think it's material, but.
Yeah, if you can, you can meet with us, uh, show us where you saw that, we can explain that to you.
Okay.
This was a great start, and I really appreciate it, it was good. And I just wanna comment on something completely off this record, but it isn't, it deals with all of you, the newsletter. I am getting so many comments on that newsletter, it was just great. This one that just came out explaining to people for the first time in their heads of what to do and the trash cans and so forth. So I, I wanna compliment everybody and this, and General Manager for what he did. Because it's so good to read it, to me, it's like a Bible, you wanna keep it and look at it. And every time somebody calls you, you just look at it and act like you know what you're doing. But anyway, thank you and thank you for being here today.
Well, as long as the newsletter's brought up, I, I read the newsletter and I, I agree with what Director Schaefer said. But there was one piece of information left out that I think is important to the community. And uh, I believe every drugstore takes meds now. And, you know, that was not noted, uh, historically Walgreens has taken meds. But I believe every drugstore, I, I don't know if that's the law, but all of a sudden they just showed up at, at every drugstore. So, uh, there's a, there generally a bin at every drugstore that will take meds. And, um, you know, that, that inform, you know, we talked about the Walgreens drugstore, which is historically done it, but we didn't mention that every drugstore does it.
We'll, we'll make note of that, thank you. Well, CBS, Mr. President, before, before you, I just wanna go and make sure, we do have some information when we're back to the board. I just wanna make, get your direction, make sure we're clear on what we're bringing back to you. So when we come back i- in May, uh, we'll bring to you, uh, the board's requested, what's the cost difference or the cost, the long-term cost uh, for the district on, on retirement costs, as we add more employees, what's that long-term retirement cost, we'll bring that to you. Uh, we, we're gonna also look, we're gonna contact the City of Costa Mesa's, their classic comp study to see what it costs them and how many employees did they include in their study. We're gonna contact SDRMA to find out if, if our Emod went, went down, then Hockamah Workers Comp went up. Uh, then we're gonna contact Alan to see if we can use the Facility Revolving Fund to demolish the Hitchcrafter building at the yard. And then we're gonna get back to you the name of the manufacturer for those seven-seven pumps. Did I miss anything? Is there anything else the board wants to bring back?
I would encourage all the board members to think about it and let you or Caitlin know if there's any question, like, obviously Bob has some. So I, I'd encourage if you have something to make sure Scott, Caitlin, get that information other than try to think of it now.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing else, thank you all again and uh, we are adjourned.